Original referendum issue, one year paving out to bid. So where do we want to stand with that, folks? So has everybody had a chance to? Look at the proposal, any questions and? Concerns, comments?
It's the the original proposal, correct?
That's correct.
Proposal that we're talking about.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
The Infrastructure Committee discussed this. Prior to Alaska, I don't know why there's two of me on here, but this. Infrastructure Committee discussed this prior to the last meeting and after a good deal of discussion. Recommended that the original year one proposal, which is primarily the paving base. Be put out in this year because of the potential for very advantageous paving prices, which could. Catch up the paving that hadn't been done over the past five years and possibly save a good deal of money in that original estimate.
Okay, do do the the lines fall underneath this or is this is that a separate issue?
This is a road project that identified paving and certain things. I would have to check with our attorney, but I would think that things like. Putting gravel on the sides isn't specifically mentioned, but it's certainly a part of this project. You know, we'll have to do that, but I can check if there were excess monies that the council wanted to use to enhance the. Road project by adding striping. I will check to see if you could do that with funds if we had. Some that were not of what you say by getting a better paving price.
And I think, sorry, Dan, I think that's what we talked about at the infrastructure meeting too, is to. Maybe look at year two and three with how much we saved to. See what extra we could do or tackle a different road or just take it year by year.
Okay.
When you say that the graveling is is not in this, but it's added, is the price of the graveling included in this or?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in the entire project. The, if you notice that the total budget was three million, the estimated cost for paving and. Those things was two point six million. There was almost four hundred thousand dollars for things like paving and culverts. Uh, not paving, gravel and culverts and all the things that go along with this. So it was included in the bond, in the proposal.
And that proposal was also based upon not the current. Price for for barrel, correct?
That the estimates for this was based on a based on a paving cost of seventy dollars a ton. And that was three dollars a ton higher than we paid last year when we paved. So if the. Paving price is anything under that seventy dollars, which it should be significantly. Then there is a potential to save a good deal of money on this project.
Okay, thank you. I'll go around real quick. Dan, anything else? Paul?
No.
Kathy? Jim?
Nothing.
Sorry.
No, it's all right. I was up reading. I got you. Ed?
Uh, no, I'm good.
All right, Mark?
No, nothing.
Okay. So. This is, this is for you to to.
To just go out to bid and get you bids for this to come back to the council. Okay.
Okay. Do we need to resolve on that or consensus?
There's no obligation. There's no obligation as a result of this bid for you to do anything. Other than look at them. It doesn't obligate the council to any expenditure funds or otherwise, no.
All right. Everybody okay, consensus?
Yes.
Yes. We will take that as a good to go. Our next item is discussion of operational changes based on the potential end of shelter and place order on four thirty twenty. Sue had sent out some material. Hopefully everybody had a chance to look at it. Sue, if you want to expound on that and then we can go around and ask questions.
Absolutely. In. Considering the. Phased plan that the state has issued for reopening. There's still some considerable gray areas in in how things are going to be implemented and. A lot of angst, shall we say, in many areas over this. That's an understatement, but. In essence, the the not more than ten people in one place hasn't changed in in regard to this. The. There are certain outdoor activities and some businesses that can now operate under some pretty stringent requirements that are. From what I understand, somewhat onerous for some of these businesses to try and meet. But. I laid out in the proposal that. Since we're now out of winter please and can and highway can operate. In a more, a less centralized way, that highway would all be back. Full strength starting Monday. The transfer station would have two people starting Thursday. Social distancing and masked and glove, which is because. The use of that facility is increasing. It's really hard for one person to be managing it at this point because of the. Degree to which the transfer station has become. People are cleaning a lot of things. Let's put it that way. Our sewer treatment facility, main water, which we contract to run that. Had a meeting today and they will be resuming their two-person. Operation from one on, one off, starting Monday, and they will be using face coverings, gloves and. Recommended personal protective equipment in their operation. Recreation with a limit of ten still is not a viable. We can't operate programs at this time and. The Y is looking at what could be operated as of June first, if phase one is. Successful and we get to where we can go from a ten person to a fifty person. They're they're working on that. The marina can open. The plan is for that to open June first. There. The cruise ship issue is off the table. No cruise ships in Maine this year. That's already been. Stated by the governor, but the marina can open and I've discussed this with our harbor master, marina manager. Mike Ormsby, that the operation of the marina and the town dock. He feels he's confident that the operation of those facilities will be manageable this season. He will be keeping track of who's coming to the town dock and where they've been and et cetera, et cetera, in order to. Ensure that things like required quarantines and that kind of thing have been met. Before anyone is out and about from that and the. The marina itself is the. The seasonal people that have traditionally been there will be allowed to have their boats there. So. That is, the docks are looking to go in May nineteenth and the marina to begin operation on June first. Public safety, I'm proposing no changes in the way that they're operating, which is they're currently. Doing temperature readings and the how are you feeling questions for all staff as they come to work and they're. Not allowing employees into the building other than that, other than into the entry area where they. One of our dispatchers has been doing yeoman's work, making face coverings for people who are interested in them and putting them there and they can't keep them. In the building. They disappear so fast. The town office is is the next item and I am proposing that. As of Monday of this week, I add another. One person, two days a week and another two people, two days a week to have three people on Mondays and. Thursdays and two on Wednesdays and Thursdays in the office in addition to me, I can. Do social distancing that way and it will be a huge assist in the phone. And work processing. I am not recommending that we open the office to. Public entry until May eighteenth. And my rationale for that is that the current state of emergency goes through May fifteenth. After that date, all of these registrations and votes and all the things that have been. Suspended for registration requirements now become due by June fifteenth and. There will be a significant increase in people who have chosen, because we give everyone the choice when they call now. Now, or do you want to wait? For the many who have waited, that will be a larger. Thing. We are having Plexiglas installed across the areas. The customer service windows at the town office. That's happening tomorrow. That was, in addition to. Being a response to COVID nineteen, it was also a recommendation of the Safety Committee some time ago to prevent access across that. Counter, so that will be happening tomorrow. The difficulty becomes when we do open, only two people will be allowed to come be in. The building at the window at a time in order to accommodate a six-foot. Distance between customers. We can use two of our windows. We can't use the middle computer because it's too close to the other one. So. In essence, two people can would be allowed in and. I will have to have one of my employees. Manning the entrance, so to speak, to ensure that others are on the six-foot marks. Through the door and out and outside. So. That's unwieldy, but it's unfortunately, right now, the way we're going to have to operate in May when we do. Open. But the reason I'm, in addition to that, May fifteenth is with the current level of. Uncertainty about whether this phase one is going to stay phase one or go back to phase zero, which is where we were in. April, I would like to give a couple of weeks for the dust to settle and see. Where we are. The numbers rose dramatically today. Based on one area of the state that had. A whole lot of positive readings and that came out in one day and I'm not sure. How they're going to treat those numbers, but I don't think it would be in our best interest to open, close, open, close. I think that would be more disruptive to. People and and I can honestly say that of the hundreds and there are hundreds of people who have called weekly. Since this started, we haven't told anyone that we wouldn't help them or that they, if they wanted what they wanted, it's. It's cumbersome, yes, but it's possible and. So that is the rationale for the town office. Assessing would return on May eighteenth, as would economic development and. Code, economic development quota downstairs, they're so they're distanced anyway. And if they had anyone come in who was going to see them, they'd have to do that and. The council chambers, there's not sufficient room in either of their offices to allow for social distancing at six feet. So that would have to be. How that worked and the assessor's office is big enough for her to be in that with. Out anybody else and and not to be a problem. The council, you folks, I'm recommending that you continue your video. Meeting strategy, at least through the end of May. If we go to. To phase two and that ups to fifty, it still presents a problem because the social distancing is required. And if we spread you out all over the council room to be six feet apart. The number of people that we can let in to the room is going to be much smaller than. Our audience sometimes is. So that's a consideration, at least through the end of May. While it's a ten-person limit, it would need to stay at the. At our current video habitat. The other thing I want to note is that I'm I'm not recommending to you that. We put a sign on the door that many places, many town offices are, which is no mask, no service. I, it will, when we are reopen, it will be enough for someone to be keeping people in. The six-foot distance and all that. I am not turning, or I would choose not to turn. A staff person into a face covering policeman. The staff themselves will be wearing face coverings in. Proximity to the that, but. Trying to enforce that in a municipal environment, I I I don't think is in our best interest. I think that the people will make choices. I hope they make good ones, but. As I said, turning it into a confrontational event just to get through the door, I I'm not sure that's really what we. Want to do if we're. Seeking to get people back in and I am. I am sorry that only a limited number will be able to come in at a time, but until that. Six-foot distancing recommendation changes, there isn't a lot I can do about that either. So that's, that's my proposal. I. Happy to listen to suggestions, input, any, I. I tried to tie it to. Events that. Or edicts that sort of govern how we're supposed to behave here. In the future, so.
All right, I'll go around the room for comments or questions or Mark?
Sue, where we're not, would the summer police officer be a good candidate to be your front door person?
With this.
The bike cop instead of having a staff member out there?
Well, the the bike cop isn't a summer police officer. The bike cop is a regular cop who's just operates. Part of, he's our our school resource officer if school's in session. Otherwise, he's on the road like everybody else. So when he's on that, he's part of the regular patrol. He's not a. He's not a. He's not a seasonal employee, shall we say. He's someone that. Who's patrolling, he's just happens to be on. A bike and and truthfully. We have had awesome response from people of the. Calls I've taken and there are many. People have been really. Happy that we're there to help, that we're doing the best we can, that we're. Trying to find new ways to do things that don't aren't face to face and. I don't envision, unless you say that I need to enforce a mask or a face covering provision. I don't envision that people who come to this office who have to. Be six feet apart and and somebody has to kind of take care of that. I don't envision that that they're going to be negative because I've seen no evidence of that here. Not, not with the people that we've dealt with.
Good. And the other question I had was how much of the. The sea, the marina crowd, they paid for those slips? Do they all signed up for the season? Or is it blind?
To the best of my knowledge, we haven't had any of the regulars. Say, never mind. I will confirm that with Mike, but I. We have taken calls this week saying, when can I bring my boat? So I'm assuming that. You know, that there are those who are anxious for it to be open, but I will confirm with Mike, yeah. The majority of the payments for those slips come in when the marina opens on the fifteenth of May. The marina is now opening the first of June. We do have some that have already been paid for though.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Ed?
Um, I don't really have many questions. Just to verify, I'm sure it will be, but the downstairs door will be locked, no entrance there, correct?
That's correct. That's our regular operations and that's not going to change.
Okay. Yeah, I I support the plan. I have no issues.
Jimmy?
I'm fine with it. I read all through it earlier today.
Kathy?
Um, I have no issues. I think Sue, you did a great job with it. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Paul?
Uh, I don't have any issues with it either. I think, and I just like to, I think Sue has done a good job with this and I'm sure she's put. A lot of thought into it. I think one thing that's kind of been unclear from the state and it's unfortunate is that. There's this supposed policy in place around the face masks, which I. In in principle, I'm wholeheartedly in agreement with, but the problem is, is that there's nothing more useless than a policy that that has no way to be enforced. Or no design to be enforced and what and what's in this policy is no way to enforce that. So I don't know how you, Sue, or any of your employees could enforce that. And so I think that said, what you've put into place is reasonable. Takes into consideration all parties and especially with the installation of the Plexiglas and all that. I'm satisfied. I think you've done a good job with that.
Danny?
I um, I agree. I like the plan. I think it looks really good. I do have a couple of questions though about our facilities. First, the either A, access to cleaning supplies. And B, do we have regular, I know we have regular service coming into the town office, but. Protocols for cleaning. And whatnot?
Yes, we have a cleaning service that comes in every night. That where it comes in Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, well, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and usually Sunday, so it's ready for Monday. There are protocols of all the surfaces and it needs to be done. We have all the disinfectants, all the wipe downs and the other. Thing when we, even now with just a couple of us in, everything anybody touches gets wiped down before if anybody else is going to. Do that, we maintain distances to the best that we can. When I go get the mail, I wear a mask. When I go to the bank, I wear, not a mask, it's a homemade.
Yep.
Face covering, but we do have a plan for continuing that cleaning and also for. We have sufficient disinfectant wipes and all those kind of things to. Wipe down. Everyone has their own area, but in the. The counter areas where people.
Yep.
Touch the same stuff. We have disinfectant wipes that we wipe down after. If I did something today, it got wiped down before Anne touched it when she, we did, so.
Is that the same at the transfer station, the marina and places like that? Do they have access to it and the availability to for cleaning?
They they have, the. Transfer station. Has cleaning supplies that are, they clean there.
Yep.
Excuse me, areas. The marina will have access to, Mike is aware of all the protocols that are required for. For cleaning. How many people can be in the marina office at one time, the surfaces that need to be taken care of, all of that kind of thing. Primarily, it's seen that it will be. People will be on their boats or if you get ice, you're outside anyway, that kind of thing, but there it. It won't be possible to to hang out and chat in the building. That's not. That's not possible.
I know that there is some.
And Rich has purchased wipes and gloves for the marina.
Oh, great.
To, he just sent me a message.
Well, I know that I know that a lot of different places are using the, I make sure I say it right, the negatively charged spray guns that are. Are spraying all the the areas and it's, I know they're they're not super expensive and it might be something. That we look into, which will get surfaces and get underneath surfaces that we can easily go around and spray, you know, after a day of. You know, people coming in and out and it might, for the future, might be something that would be really beneficial to have. But I I like the plan. I think you did a really good job with it. Thank you.
Thanks. I did want to mention, I didn't touch on this with recreation, is that. Playgrounds, according to the federal CDC, are still no. The limit is ten, the playgrounds are still off limits, so. I'm not sure what happens when the limit gets to fifty, but for right now, they're, Rich sent me that also. That is, that's an off the table. Discussion for May anyway, so.
Sue, do you know if if the playground, I think it's at the Mays Lane? Or is there still a play area up there at the Mays Lane School? And if so, does, is the RSU watching that or are they?
I, the, all of the playgrounds, whether they were owned by the RSU or the town, got yellow taped by our police.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, my questions, again, I appreciate you guys because you asked the same questions I was thinking. The one question about the marina, if somebody does. Does ask for a refund, do we have a procedure, policy in place to be able to do that?
Absolutely. That, that all of those funds are in that enterprise account. They're. In classified revenue. We know who paid and when they paid. If they ask for a refund, they, we would give them one.
Yeah, and I know last year, I think we had a waiting list. Do we know if we still have a waiting list that would fill in the slips if they were there?
I I will check with Mike. I don't want to speak out of turn. I know that there have been more people that wanted it than we had room for them.
Right. Okay. So looking around and seeing everybody's smiling faces, I don't hear anybody that has. Any any qualms with what we want, with what Sue has proposed to go forward with, with the dates and and everything and. Everybody okay with the council still meeting like this, at least for the next month also?
Yes.
Until we, until we can get some more folks into a space. I agree that the six-foot. Distancing may be with us for a while. We may end up doing the council with NASA. Who knows? I don't know, but. We seem to be a little more comfortable doing this. I I think we're getting accustomed to it and. We're going to be meeting a lot coming up here in the next month, so I guess we're going to have to get used to it at some point.
The marina is full. They had one cancellation, but it was replaced with a waiting list, so the marina seasonal slips are full.
Thanks, Rich.
Excellent.
All right, I think you got the okay, Sue, to go forward with that?
Well, thank you all very much. As I said, the. The one I was concerned about was the idea of waiting till the eighteenth for the town office, but I really, when we open, I want to stay open. I don't want to. It confuses people to. Are you open? Are you closed? People know that we're here. That's what's important. If if we're here, we can help you. It's, it might be odd, but we can. Get things done, so.
Yep, okay. Next item is a resolve twenty twenty fifty to award the Tim Emery Municipal Pool Repair Contract. I don't think we have good news on this, Sue.
There were no bids received on the pool contract.
So.
Kathy?
Nope, Kathy's still here.
Okay, I have two marks, two me's and I can't see Kathy, but anyway. I'm sorry. We did not receive any bids. We had nine different vendors. Two pool people, two contractors and five other entities and. And non-submitted proposals.
Do we think it may have been part of the the rules that came out from the governor saying that? Big groups weren't going to be able to meet anyway and they didn't want to put the time in and?
Well, I I reached out to a local person who had asked about, who had asked for plans and said. Why didn't you bid? Because it was a, seemed like a relevant question and. His concern was that the bid language regarding. The feed lines. his concern was that the bid language regarding, um, the feed lines, not the main line, but the ones around, um, could either be a, a not very expensive issue, or an extremely expensive issue, and that without any kind of additional information on the condition of that, it was it was, um, he didn't wish to put in a hard and fast bid on something that he didn't know the, the total state of what was there, um. I asked him if he would sit down with me and, uh, go over, oh, how it might be better phrased, or if there was a way to do this that would have either a range, or a not to exceed number, something that allowed bidding or proposals that addressed that issue. I'm not sure if that's the reason why everyone didn't, but that's the reason why our most local person didn't, um, bid on that, and if the council doesn't have any objections, I would like to meet with him and discuss the elements of this, to see if there is a way that we can put together something that will allow this, I I think it's unlikely that we're gonna be putting kids in a pool July first with the current regulations anyway, because the fif- even fifty would start to become an issue when you shut the gate in people's faces, so, um, but I would like.
Can I, can I, can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Um, who was on the committee, Paul, were you on the committee?
Yes.
Um, anybody else on the council on the committee?
I was.
Okay, did we have, actually have an engineer look at this and come up with what was gonna be needed for a plan, or was this and I, and I say this in the best way, a bunch of you guys sitting around hoping and figuring it was gonna be something? Or do we actually have somebody?
We have engineered plans for this repair.
Yep.
Okay, so, 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 so this person, their, their issue may be just their issue, but we have engineered plans?
Yes.
Okay, I, I personally, um, you know, I don't see why you'd have to sit down with somebody if we've got engineered plans out there, that's what you're bidding your specs on. Um, yeah, it may, it may take more, but you sit down once, so I think you gotta sit down with them all. Um, I, I, I would be I, I, I would be hesitant, I think, to sit down with just a one contractor to try to come up with a different wording that may may give a, an advantage to somebody or in somebody else, so.
Peter, one thing to add.
Yeah.
Could we go back to Tom, the pool guy, Sue, and, and get his take on why we didn't receive bids, and if there's something he could do different to receive bids?
I, I reached out to him and said, we got no bids, and he said, did you get something, and he said, no? A- and he said he had reached out to a number of pool entities about this project, but we didn't get any bids.
All right, well, the resolve is, there's nothing to vote on, um. Where, where, what, what, what's the, what's the council's pleasure, I, I, I have a thought, but I will certainly go around the room and take some advice and.
Uh, Peter, I have a quick question, uh.
Sure.
Um, I guess I'm not fully understanding what they mean by that outlined piping could be very expensive or inexpensive. I mean, I'm not, I'm not a plumbing person, so I don't know this, but it, it just seems like the engineered plan should show in my mind if the pipeline's there, they should know that it's gotta be replaced. I'm, I'm a little confused on what the issue would be there.
Sue, with some of that conversation, um, just because I know that's been a topic of discussion, is the lines that go around the pool? And whether, and how bad they really are. Um, so I, my understanding, however, was as part of those engineered plans, it did call for certainly inspection of those lines. Um, would it really be that somebody is hesitant, and again, I, I'm with Ed, I'm not a plumber, so um, would it be that the concern is the fact that, yeah, we could tear those up and, or not tear them up, but inspect those and find everything is fine? Um, you know, attach a, the type of air compressor or whatever, that you need to do that and determine that it's fine? Or we could get in there and find that we've got to dig all those pipes up, replace them, and, and then of course, cover them. I guess that, it sounds like that is the issue?
That is the issue.
Okay. So I, I, and I think that's gotta be part of the engineered plans that was the part that was the most there was, it wasn't as tangible in terms of what the issue there was, like, we could look down into that main drain pipe, there was, there was film, um, you know, they sent a camera down, we could see where the issues were there. We know some of the issues in terms of what was replaced and not replaced in nineteen ninety, but in terms of those ori- uh, well, in terms of those feed lines, um, that's where there was some discrepancy in, in terms of exactly how bad it was, and so I, and I think back to the mayor's point, I think if if you were going to do that, Sue, you would, in my mind, I think, I agree, you would have to at least invite everybody else that, that you sent out bid paperwork to, to be part of that conversation, and I'm not sure that, how pragmatic that really is, but that would be up to all of us.
Anybody else have, any comments?
I, I do, as, uh, a- as I recall, the gentleman, uh, when I asked him if, uh, these repairs that they were planning to make were going to last for any length of time, if it so became a necessity that we keep it for a length of time? He assured us that, yes, these repairs would be, uh, to that degree. Uh, and now we're, we're looking at an issue, we don't know what we should do with this pipe, we don't know if we have to replace it, we don't know if it's gonna be a small job, it's gonna be a large job. I would think that for the amount of money that we paid this gentleman, that we would already know that in the, uh, contract that he put out.
That, that, that was my question, I guess, is why, why would there be a, why would there be a question to what the job is? And, and if, if the job is more than people want to do, then that's fine too, if nobody wants to bid on it, um.
I, I think the question was, if those pipes were okay, the price is one thing, if those pipes all need to be replaced, the price is another, and without knowledge of what those pipes are, the option is to bid to replace every single thing, and then when the, uh, things are exposed, if it doesn't need to happen, we've just paid for something that's way more than what the.
I guess that, I guess that comes back to my, that comes back to my original question is why wouldn't the engineered um, design have that already in place of what needed to be fixed, that was my understanding, is what we were paying for, like Jim said.
We would have had to excavate those lines to know what shape they were in.
Well, I think we're there, by the sounds of it, because nobody's, nobody's looking at it any other way, so.
And perhaps that is the next, um, step to this, but right now, there isn't a way to know the condition of those lines, um, with any degree of certainty, so that's and as I said, this is one person and locally, and, and I asked because I was surprised that we received zero bids on this.
Peter, one more question, please.
Yeah.
Um, I, I maybe I'm confused, but I thought the last time the council talked about this pool, the bidding and all that, that I thought we discussed, we, we were looking into just, if we're gonna do the two lines, we're gonna do the whole lines, because we're gonna have things ripped up. I thought that's what we were addressing before, was it's all or nothing type deal.
Well, that's what I thought, that's why I asked the question of, why would it be a surprise to somebody of I may have to replace the lines, when I thought that was part of the process?
I, so. I'm repeating what I was.
No, I know, I, 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 I get it, and and, and, and I'm wondering if how the RFP went out, um, uh, to, to, to state what we were, what we were trying to get, or was it so broad that it's, it's allowing this interpretation to happen? Can you have a conversation, I, I guess my thing would be, if Sue could have a conversation with the guy that did the RFP? And see if, I, what our understanding is, I don't see anybody that's, that's disagreeing with what we think the understanding should be up to relook at that RFP to include something that's going to fix the pool? Um, because we're getting close to the point where are we going to fix the pool or replace the pool, and from what we've heard over and over is, let's look at fixing the pool at a number that would be hopefully substantially less than replacing the pool? But we've got to have the right information in order to have folks come in and fix what we don't know needs to be fixed? And if we need, if we need to do something, um, to, to be able to get the right information out there, I think it comes back to what we always talk about, what is that return on investment, how much is it gonna cost, they got to take a look at those pipes? Compared to what we're gonna get for replacing those pipes, if they do, or is it a ten thousand dollar check to go check them, hey, they're all good? Or is it a ten thousand dollar check, no, they're, 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 they're crap, and we do need to replace them, but at least then we have a true idea of what we're doing, instead of throwing darts and and trying to figure it out, because right now, um, you know, May first, we are not gonna have that pool available by July first, I, 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 I don't want to throw any false hopes out there, but the, the couple of things we have going on with the state that we're in, having to start this process almost again, um, I'm not hundred percent sure that we were gonna be able to even open the pool anyway now, with the, with the conditions that we're operating under. Um, so I don't know if we're personally, I think we're okay to try to get it done right, which I thought we were trying to do right from the start, I think that's what I've heard over and over. Um, and if we don't have a pool, at least we're, we're working towards getting it right, which we had talked about trying to get it right, so. Thought, thoughts, thoughts, thoughts on that from anybody?
I agree.
I agree too.
I'm with you.
I agree too.
I will contact Tom, the engineer, I know that these, the the bid package kind of documents, the, the way it was put together, um, was based on uh, the way the documents for, I believe it was the Brewer Pool, you know, it was a very similar kind of request, the same kind of pool, those kind of things, not the exact same fixes, but, um, that kind of thing, I, I will reach out to him tomorrow and see what I can get for feedback in terms of this question about the specificity of what people were bidding on, as opposed to what I was told by, um, the vendor that I reached out to, that.
If, if, if that's something, if that's something we need to address, then we can, we can bring it up and and see if that's what we want to do, and if everybody, I, I think, if it sounds like everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Um, we don't, we don't have any bids to vote on, so.
The other thing, I know, I know Sue talked to one, the other thing, and I don't want to prolong this issue, eh, eh, but the other thing that to maybe consider is that some of these people there was a desire of the council to have this wrapped up by July first? And some of these contractors may have decided that there's just simply, that's not practical, and there's, it's unlikely that it would be used on July first or second anyway? And why in the world would they, um, go to that extent? Eh, because it's gonna cost them more to do it in sixty days versus what it might in a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty, it may just be worth I hate to say it, it may be worth exploring the option of just saying, we're gonna take this summer to fix this pool, given the likelihood that even if the state were to, whenever the nu- normalcy happens, is gonna be so late in the summer anyway, that it might be more worth our, our better use of our time and money to take the extra time, do what we need to do on the pool, so that hopefully, you know, that Monday in June that occurs in twenty twenty one, when hopefully this is all blown over, we're back in, in doing what we need to do, just a consideration.
Well, and I would have no problem with that, as, 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 I still think we need to truly find out what is wrong with it, and if we have to spend the extra dollars to find out if those pipes are right? And then if we, if we have to extend it to get it done and not, and it's not done until September or October, we then know that that thing will be ready to open on, on June twentieth or whatever, next year.
No disagreement there at all, yep.
The thing that I found most surprising was I sent out ten packages, I didn't get one call, one question, one, nobody, which is unusual. When you put up bid packages for any kind of substantial work, it's extremely common that if someone has a question, or someone, something is open to interpretation, or we get calls, and that's why the engineer's information was in the package, that if there were those kind of questions that, and he got none, and we got none here, and
And I'm wondering if that's a failure, a failure on our part to actually have a prepared document, you know, um.
Well, it, I, it was a, it was a well-prepared document, I, I mean, it was a, it was a document consistent with a bid package for a substantial sized project, it wasn't three pages and, you know.
No, but I'm just wondering if the scope of the work wasn't all in there, and it, and there was I don't know, I, I just, I think it's, I think it's worth exploring the, the, what we were asked, and then and then see where we're at, so. Uh, but you see, I don't see any disagreement on that, so.
On here.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, um, that was all we had on here, our next meeting will be next Thursday at six, I believe, Sue, for budget stuff?
At six, and you will, you will be receiving your budget stuff over the course of this weekend, um. The first thing you'll get are the things for next week, but you'll have the whole thing by the end of the weekend, I met with Jim uh, Boothby on, I don't know what today is, Wednesday to discuss their plans for budgeting, which is very similar to mine, in which they're flatlining their budget, um, for this year, and with the idea that not to create a hill that you have to climb in another year, um, which is, but to flatline it in a way that, um, doesn't just either use too much fun balance, or put off things that you, that have to happen in order to artificially lower your mill rate, when you know that in another year or two, it's gonna have to people don't generally do well with brainwave kind of um, tax impact, so, um, anyway, I had a very good discussion with him about what they're proposing and, um, in looking at what other communities are doing, and, and what the susceptibilities in this community are for pressure on things like taxes and excise that differ from other communities that rely on high amounts of parking fees, or revenues from event centers, or all sorts of things that are are heavily impacting many communities who have, for example, Augusta and its Civic Center, and Bangor and the Cross Center, those ki- those kind of entities are are feeling the pain, because they're, those are very large revenue sources from them, and they're, they're not they're not in operation right now, so, um, that will be out, we'll have, the first one will be next Thursday, it will be Public Works and the Transfer Station, and an introduction to the overall budget.
So, real quick, will will you be presenting for those folks, or will they be available for questions on other processes?
My, my plan was, as the budgets are presented, that the department heads who oversee those budgets would be included on the call.
Okay.
So, so that they can answer questions and present their information.
Yep.
Is that acceptable to everyone, if I include them on the call, so they can do that, yeah, that was the plan.
Okay. All right, any further questions on anything, real quick? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion for adjourn.
Second. Second.
Danny with a motion, Paul with a second, Jacob, roll call around the table real quick, just to give you something to do.
Dan, what I'm seeing?
Yeah.
Ed Rankin?
Yes.
Paul Bissonette?
Yes.
Jim Morrison?
Yes.
Peter Stewart?
Yes.
Mark Eastman?
Yes.
Kathy Downs?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks. Have a good night, and, um, stay safe. We'll see you next Thursday at six.
All right, see you later. Night, everyone.
Goodnight, you.